I've missed a few fellows at church camps and stuff, so it might have already got addressed, so I'm not sure. But it was just brought up at the end of school about what plans is going to be made, and I was just curious if y'all had moved in any direction.
Okay, all right. I'll let Michael go first or two of y'all. You sign up, and then I'm sure I even signed up. Are you familiar with the, how much time?
I'm just trying to get three minutes. Thank you, School Board and Mr. Superintendent. I want to speak today a little bit about some public information that's come out, and everything I have here is from the TDA website. I come as a citizen, taxpayer, and as a governmental financial pressure. The Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas refers to us first. Give schools one of our school districts. This year, A 1.8 percent received an A. 11.55 percent received a B. 6.16 percent received a C. This is a total of 63 school districts out of 1,022. 0.49 percent received F, so this is the next grade after C. Five out of 1,022 received this score. Specifically on Iola ISD. In 2014, 2015, our school district received an A. We had a fund balance per TDA's website of $1,608,471. In 2015-16, our school district received a B. We had a fund balance of $1,411,635. The most recent score we received, which is on the 2016-17 school data, was a C. Our fund balance dropped to $655,849. I want to read two sections out of that report that are a concern to me and I'm sure all the citizens. In that score, we received zero in two areas. One question was, was the number of days of cash on hand and current investment in the general fund for the school district sufficient to cover operating expenditures, excluding facilities, acquisition, and construction costs? We received a zero. The next zero we received was, did the school district's general fund revenues equal or exceed expenditures, excluding facilities, acquisition, and construction costs? If not, was the school district's number of days of cash on hand greater or equal to 60 days? We received a zero. Out of 10 points. The question then comes in, and I think a lot of us want to know, is what is our fund balance as of 2017-18? Because that's a big question and concern for all of us, because that will be our next grade going into the year after. If it goes down, we receive an F. We will be one of the smaller percentages of the state. I want to reiterate the responsibilities of a school board and staff and administration is the stewardship of citizens' funds and the sustainability of the standards of a school. Iola ISD is one of the main reasons people come to our area. That's the reason why our property values are the way they are. People are trying to move here, they can't find stuff. So any change in our school districts, I'm going to say viability or credibility, hurt all of us, taxpayers, property owners, everything. One other area I want to speak about real quick, financial transparency. This comes as experience. If you don't know, I'm the treasurer for the City of College Station, Texas. We have to have financial information posted on our website, budgets, financials, budget amendments, any type of budgetary controls. I do want to point you guys to the Texas Education Code, Section 44.0041 on the budget. Please investigate that, requirements for budget transparency. I just want to say, as a concerned citizen and taxpayer, many of us in the community have seen the most recent report. We're just concerned. We want to make sure that we write our school district. We don't want nothing more than to have a viable version for the district.
Thank you.
Jim, your next note. It sounded like you were going to pose a question. No, we're not responding back to y'all, you're just talking. So, I mean, you can pose it that way. We have what information you requested, and maybe we'll get back to you on the side.
Okay. But go ahead. Okay. The only thing that, I was at the, I guess, the meeting in May, at the end of May, and we had talked about an issue with security, and just like today with the issue that's in College Station going on. Y'all had said that y'all were going to look at it. I know Mr. Jones had, I think, met with the firm to see what way, you know, some bids and stuff with that. So I was kind of trying to see if we had moved in any area. I know that y'all had said y'all were going to get some feedback from the community and so forth. So I was just, you know, just seeing where that was going.
I would encourage you, Mr. Martindale. We have had conversations. Okay. All right. Thank you, Jim. Item number four, consideration of 2018-2019 budget.
Love you guys having closing your packet, proposed budget for 2018-19 school year. You can see it has an under 199 general fund, a total revenue projected, revenue of $4,799,991, and total expenditures under 199 general funds of $4,736,659, which is in excess of $63,000 and some change. You also see 240, lunchroom account is working at in totals to the far left. So you're covering lunchroom, and all the totals, you see it will be in excess of $44,299 projected.
One question, the budget workshop, we had talked about an extra employee in the cafeteria. Is that in the budget?
Yes, sir. That is in this budget, and we have one hiring recommendation for this evening that is also in this budget. So I recommend that the board trustees approve.
I have a question about the, about the, I feel like, you know, I know that you got this information, but I'm just feeling like because of our situation, that the revenue projection is too high for what we're actually going to receive based on the information that I got from the appraisal district office. Have any of you seen this? You know, what? I think it's about, it's about $200,000 to $300,000. That less of what we're actually going to get according to the county appraisal. And so I'm just thinking that we should be more conservative since we are in a financial crisis, financial situation, and that we should look at what the county says we're going to get.
Sure. And when we talked today on the phone, I shared with you the difference comes from that worksheet that you just passed out does not include the frozen taxes. And so that's why I have a different projected revenue. And as I shared again, the budget workshop, I talked to several different school finance people. I followed up with one Thursday on the phone who does private consulting for school districts, and he gave me a free hour over the phone. And after looking at our template, he said our numbers were good.
Well, I think that, I think we're just saying, well, it would be good if we got it, but what if we don't? And that if we were the conservative side, then if we had any, if we got more than we thought, then that might just be more that we could put back in for now.
Not unless we cut expenses.
Well, anyway, I think that we can cut more expenses.
I thought that was the purpose of the budget workshop.
Well, I asked, we discussed some things, and he was also going to look up, and we didn't actually have another meeting to go over those things. $200,000 to $300,000 is a lot of money.
I think the numbers are right. And I do think it's, these are 18 days. 355 is the frozen value. Let's start at the top. This is our total taxable value, 337. They take out 41 million, right? For those that are subject to any kind of exemption. So they take that out on your left with this 296.
Mm-hmm.
1.04 times 296 is that 3083470.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Now, that 41 million doesn't go untaxed. It's just a set tax amount of 355,237, down near the bottom. So you have to add the 3083470 to the 355 to come up with the 3438707, which is actually more than what he has budgeted in there.
Right.
And I think these numbers are right.
So what, so what about the county's numbers?
It includes everything except for the 355,237.
It includes?
Doesn't include the frozen.
Does not include this.
So you're, so...
We still get this amount, because I called Shannon Sanders and everybody myself.
Mm-hmm.
We get this. Just, if you go back to 2017, go through the same calculation, comes up we should receive $3,011,760. To date, we've received 29, dang near 3. So we get within $10,000 to $20,000 of that. So I think the numbers are right of the revenue side.
As Mr. Bush pointed out, the number we're using is conservative compared to what we're supposed to be receiving. Also did that with our state funding as well. And the template shows that our state funding would be a little more than what we've budgeted here as well. So both numbers are conservative.
And in past years, we've included TNPA money, decided to include TNPA money?
Very little. $55,000?
$55,000.
Yes. I believe the notification we got from TNPA was...
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two. So again, another conservative estimation for revenue.
Are there other cuts you want to discuss? I mean, we can...
About what?
The cuts. You said we could be more conservative.
Well, on the budget, and I think that we should, that we should get back together again. I think that we could be, but I'm just, I'm really nervous about this. I think that even the county goes along with what they say they're going to get by this. And so I'm just, you know, I'm really nervous that we might not get that much money.
Okay. What's the deadline for passing the budget? This is just proposed budget, so we post it and make it with the tax rate?
Yes.
The tax rate's set. It's going to be a dollar four and the...
Dollar four, and INS is set also to make our minimum payment. So that has to be posted. We have to go out on Wednesday's page.
But the difference in the works that Ms. Carolyn handed out in what's budgeted is basically the frozen funds.
It's the frozen funds. That sheet doesn't include.
Okay. So you're wanting to get back together, another budget workshop?
Yeah.
Do we have time?
Our budget has to pass before September 1st.
So this, do we have to pass the proposed budget for the paper?
Yes.
Okay. Is everybody okay to pass it as proposed, and then we'll call another workshop?
Anything other wanted to ask me?
We're happy.
Yeah. I don't know that, I don't know how much longer we can get on the expense side. I mean, we went through the, I mean, the last year.
Well, as I look, payroll has increased about $400,000 in three years. That's an expense that's not going to go away. And I don't know, it's going to be very difficult to have a balanced budget every year because of that amount of money that increased in payroll.
Right, but it's frozen.
So, but, yeah.
But that's the number?
But I think that, yeah.
That payroll number is the number that is used in the budget though?
Right, right, right. It is. But I see that the other functions haven't been cut that much, like supplies, just, there's other things to me that have not been cut that much when I got that. Did you all look at that information, the detailed function? Did you look at that? Compared to the year before or compared to this year, it didn't look like there were a lot of cuts anywhere.
In our budget workshop, we agreed on all the cuts that I was making, and I made even more since the budget workshop.
And I didn't have that information at that time.
Okay. Why don't we move forward with that now? We'll pass the proposed, and the tax rate is set. I mean, we don't really have a choice there. We'll call another budget workshop and decide how.
So it's likely, because I'm kind of new at this, so we pass a proposed, what does that mean? If you can still change it?
We have, yes, it's proposed. We can still change. We really don't, I think we have to do that because of the posting and the deadline for our weekly circulation this week, so tonight we have to do this.
Right.
But then we can come back, roll our sleeves up and see if we can find more cuts.
And just because we have a passed budget doesn't mean we can't make expense cuts along the way.
That is true. Yeah. Which I think that what Mr. Martindale's trying to do with staff is encourage everybody to find where they can save. But if we can do that, if you feel better about looking at it again.
Motion to accept the proposed budget as presented.
Okay. Motion to accept the proposed budget as presented. Second. Second by Scott, does anybody raise your hand? Motion carries six oh. Item number five, consideration of proposed tax rate for 2018-2019.
You guys have in your packet there the proposed tax rate. INS tax rate for the 2018, or the 2018-19 bond payment is $588,850. Last year, our INS rate was .2255 cents. Tax rate of .19408, we'll collect additional funds needed, which is the $588,000 that we need to pay our bond payment for 2018. This is down .0315 cents from last year. Our M&amp;O rate, Grange County has certified our 2018 freeze adjustable tax value at $296,487,574. The 2017 certified freeze adjusted taxable value was $2,600,261,423,000. This is an increase of $34,64,574. This past year, our M&amp;O rate was a dollar four. So the proposed tax rate, the 2017 tax rate was a dollar twenty-six. I would recommend an INS rate of .19408. I recommend an M&amp;O rate of a dollar four, but that's a little off that. The total rate would be a dollar, $1.23. This is a decrease, again, of .0315 cents from last year. So I recommend the board trustees approve the proposed INS tax rate of .19408 cents, and a proposed M&amp;O tax rate of a dollar four for 2018, or a total tax rate of $1.23 cents.
Before we get a motion, does anybody recall, does that have to be in separate motions?
We have one tax rate.
Okay. All right.
How do you go with me?
Do you have a motion to approve the tax rate as presented? Total tax rate of 1.2655, does it open for discussion?
Second.
Does anybody raise your hand? Motion carries six oh. Item number six, consideration of tax assessor collector certification, 2017 excess debt collection and 2018 anticipated collection rate.
Each year, the tax assessor collector required by law to certify excess debt collection and the next year's anticipated collection rate. The anticipated collection rate is always set at 100 percent. A copy of the certification is enclosed in your packet. I recommend the board trustees approve the tax assessor collector's certification of 2017 excess debt collections and 2018 anticipated collection rate.
So we...
Have a motion? Second, any discussion? Does anybody raise your hand? Motion carries six oh. Item number seven, consideration of approval of the local investment policy.
In closing your packet, you'll find a TASB policy, CBA Local. The investment management policy for the district funds shall be in accordance with the standard of care, investment training, and other requirements set forth in the government code of chapter 2256. The superintendent or other person designated by board resolution shall serve as the investment officer of the district. The policy of this officer must be approved and/or approved immediately. And I recommend the board trustees still approve the local investment policy, CBA Local.
I have a question about page, what is it, three or four? Internal controls. This is number three, custodial safekeeping and clear delegation authority. Is this for investment only, or is this also that funds can be withdrawn?
Um...
Because I would like something added to that, that either the, before funds can be withdrawn, that we, that at least the board president knows, or the board knows, or there's other people that, you know, can look into that before it's drawn, that they can't just go in and draw the money out.
Sure. I believe this states this for withdrawal also. I don't have any problem. You guys want to add something there as local policy, so...
I do not want to be notified every time.
It's up to you guys.
The current control, what's the amount for two signatures? Five?
I don't know.
I think it's five.
I think it's five. And the only, you thought already, you don't want to count, but you know, didn't you?
I would not.
Yes. Here, yeah. Right.
I think I am a fan of Joe, not Joe, but Jan, but maybe you're at this time. I'll have to double check.
So Ms. Mallon, just, are you wanting to add something right there?
Well, I'm just thinking that in the past that we have voted that the superintendent and Jan are the ones that have the authority to do this, but I'm just saying, I feel like it needs to be, before funds are withdrawn, that either you're notified before they're withdrawn, or the board is aware that funds...
Over a certain dollar threshold, or?
Well, I think any amount out of fund balance at this point.
Oh, out of fund balance. I got you.
Yeah. And that's basically, well, investments are a fund balance, right? Investments are part of fund balance. Yeah.
Okay. Well, they're not separated. They're in a general fund. I mean, they're not...
We have, yeah.
It's what's unaccounted for or left over.
Right.
I mean, the only ones that are in fund balance that aren't moving would be your time deposits. The tax pool is in and out all the time. But you move from tax pool to Wells Fargo, and so that would be a movement, and all your revenue goes in there. Do you want to postpone it and maybe we can look into that more?
And, okay.
Do we need, does this have to be passed right now?
No, sir.
Okay.
We can look into it and add it to the new...
Okay.
I'll check with somebody who's written that policy. Check it, please.
No, we're not going to tip around for any extra minutes. I think it's to item number eight, personnel.
Ms. Sajewski, you want to... I just have a recommendation for hiring another certified teacher. As you know, we've been keeping up to speed on one of our, one of our groups of students that are going into fifth grade right now. They're our largest grade, I believe they're up to 51 as of now. Mrs. Hamilton, Kristi Hamilton, was a certified teacher last year who acted as an aide inside the classroom to help the fourth grade teachers, pull small groups, guide instruction, and really help in a lot of areas that they need to help in. She was dedicated to those kids. She helped lesson plan with both Mrs. Rice and Mrs. Davis. So I'm recommending Kristi Hamilton to be the fourth grade math and science teacher. And what that allows us to do, that allows us to have, Mrs. Rice, she had come up and said that she would want to move up with fifth grade and act as a third teacher to do science and social studies. So kind of taking a little bit of burden off of fifth grade, Ms. Tran having to do two star subjects now, she only needs to do one. Mrs. Rice was asking if she could do that. So by us having a third teacher in fifth grade, I'd like to hire Ms. Hamilton to do the fourth grade math and science position.
And that's along with what you had recommended before, that we review it ongoing, and that's what you've come to, you feel pretty good about that.
Yes, yes. It takes the class size down from 25, 26 down to 17, 16. So helps tackle that.
Do we have any other large classes that are close to them?
We have, right now, as, right now, second grade, I guess, sort of sprouted up. As of today, I think we're at 49. But I met with Ms. Mallon and Ms. McCowen, and we had talked about some options for this year. Should it get too big? They're going to evaluate if they have any needs, kind of like we saw last year, and I've got some options that we're going to work out.
Ms. Sajewski, the numbers in second grade's kind of sprouted just over the summer for that.
Yeah, within a couple weeks.
Because those classes were not that big last year in first grade.
Yeah.
So keep it moving to the district.
Yeah, that's not transferred.
Are there any of those transfers in fifth grade or in second grade?
Um, not really in fifth grade. The ones that have come that are in fifth grade, they've been here since kindergarten. They're just kind of grandfathered in. But we didn't take any new transfers for second. We saw the numbers getting close to the waiver size, and we thought, well, let's just leave it open. We're glad we did, because they're, you know, they've really gotten a lot of kids the last couple weeks, so.
So I recommend the approval of employment questions.
Well, I have a question here. I, you know, of all the people that want this, I want it for the kids, I want it. I don't think we can afford it. I truly don't think we can afford it. I, I think that in reading, that they needed the smaller groups, especially in the lower grades, and that's where it's capped, right? 22 to fourth grade, and fifth grade's not capped.
Right.
Fifth grade no longer is learning how to read, they're learning skills about reading, but, you know, I just think, I don't think we can afford it to hire. That is the most expensive part of our budget, is payroll. And we keep, and we're adding where we should be cutting. We should be cutting. We've got to make up for all this that we should be cutting.
I think one of the things that was so different about the fifth grade group while we're looking into that was because, you know, by fifth grade, they should be really reading to learn, and there was, you know, several, about half, that were significantly under grade level in reading. So, you know, that really helps keeping them smaller, because some, quite a few of those kids are still learning to read at a third grade level. So we're out.
But they have intervention, right? They have reading intervention, and they have math intervention. They have intervention. We're providing intervention.
Yes, yes.
I want to say this to the board. When we were in the budget workshop, we, again, we discussed the exact thing we gave Mr. Martindale to go ahead, so I don't think we have a choice here.
When we cut a person, you know, this year, this position, we did away with it, and we're working on budget. We've done, completely done away with an administrative position, which is going to make it harder on several people that does what you do, to make things work. Again, that's still my recommendation.
The only thought too on that is this is something that we've been working with the last, Kristi, is that right on that, the different grade levels, not that under paper, because I may as well be setting, budget-wise, it's not really Carolyn and I agree with you on that. But I think this was a way that we could kind of work with aides, additional help, to get this class that was struggling, and we told her she should be helped to come through. It's not felt like the best way right now, but she asked, and she was helping, so that's what she asked.
Ms. Martindale, this is in the budget as well, this position? So which comes back down?
Yes, sir.
Who hired Kristi Hamilton?
Motion and second to hire Kristi Hamilton as presented, open for conversation?
I'm going to vote against it, not the person, and I want it more than anybody, but I'm going to vote against a position being created.
Okay. Any other discussion? Does anybody raise your hand? opposed, there would be five more. Carolyn opposed.
I have one more thing. Just information for you guys, there is a required board training, Senate Bill 1566, and we have to have that training done before September 1st. Contacted Region 6, and they have, only certain people can provide this training. You have to be certified to provide this training. you have to be certified to provide this training. So we need to be here on August 30th, that's when the Region 6 person can be here. If we can all be here as a team of eight on the 30th, we also take care of the required team of eight training. Again, if that one's required, and this required base for December 31st. So if we can all be here on August 30th for this training, we get two trainings and one session.
What is filed on that night's card, Mike?
It's this Thursday night. We have a board meeting the 29th for our budget, and Thursday night is, I don't think there's any school activities, when I checked the calendar, I missed over nine. So my question for you guys was, do you want a morning, afternoon or evening training? It'll be about two hours.
Does it favor the morning?
It's on August 30th?
That's on August 30th, yes, sir.
I don't have a mind for any of that. On that evening?
That evening?
Both that.
Can you make the, so is it all day or?
Yes, sir.
So you can make them all?
So you can make them morning? So that's, I'm just trying to look for your feedback so I can call this gentleman tomorrow and schedule.
So you can make them morning?
I can make them morning. Is eight o'clock okay with anyone here?
Mm-hmm.
All right. That's all I need, I was good with eight o'clock. And like I said, all of us being here, we'll get both trainings at one time.
And we're digging a little bit of a short run and getting a budget workshop called back together for second meeting. Has anybody ever made your complex, what is today, Monday, 13th, 14th? We have to be this week, we probably want to pull schools off. Do you just want to shoot everybody an email and tell us after you check your calendar?
Yes, sir. As are I.
Need more motion?
Please return.
Second. No opposition.